Regarding Amendment Two, and before you get started, I just want to thank everyone for showing up. This is an eclectic group of individuals who represent the heart of Morgantown and Montegia County. And I want to thank Mark Music and his representatives, who are going to explain and give information so that the public truly understands what they're voting on with Amendment Two. And with that, I'll be quiet and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Everybody hearing me good?
Mm-hmm.
Welcome. I'd echo that. Nice turnout.
Yes.
Very nice turnout. So, what we're hoping to do today, as we've been doing as some assessors, we've been traveling around trying to do an education forum on Amendment Two individuals. And we've been fortunate to speak at some groups to kind of give the information that we've received from legislation, and we want to make sure that we pass that along. You can understand how to give the ballot, what you're looking at when you're voting on. And we took it fortunate, too, to have Jonathan Adler here, who's our executive director of the West Virginia Association of Counties, or otherwise known as Waco. Jonathan also attends the interims. He's kind of our voice, also, too, for all the county elected officials, and has presented a lot of this, too, for some of the other groups. And he'll be sitting back with me today on this, along with my chief deputy, Mr. Patrick Tenney, who put some of this information together for us. So, the three of us will kind of hopefully get some information to you that when you leave, you'll have a little idea. It may not be full, but things continue to change. And the role we want to present to you today is what we want to take this time. All right? Jonathan, do you have anything to add on that? Before we start?
No. All right, now, Mark, come here.
Okay. Amendment Two. That's what's coming up on the ballot. Actually, there's four amendments coming up on the ballot this fall. And I usually don't say coming up in November, because we know early voting starts October 26th. So, that's the important aspect. That's what the majority of people want to come out. So, does anybody have an idea of Amendment Two? What you've heard, or you want to share anything right off the bat? Does anybody have anything there? Or what your thoughts are on Amendment Two? Okay. All right. Amendment Two is, from our understanding, and I'll try to try to in shorter terms, is giving authority, giving our authority to current and future legislation to exempt businessperson property, which is machinery, equipment, inventory, and personal property motor vehicles. As you can see, when I hand it out to you, I hand it out, the front page there has the four amendments that are coming up on the ballot this fall, and how they'll look when they come up. Amendment Two is the second one on the ballot. That's why they moved it to Amendment Two. If you read that, it's kind of just going over what I just said. It's giving up your authority. And that's authority from present, the next generation down, and so forth. So, if you're kids, grandkids, great-grandkids, all the way down. If this amendment were to come back up in another fashion, all right, it doesn't come back to the voters. This is the one-time shot that is coming to the voters right now for either a yes or an no, to give that legislation back. But the one thing to remember, too, with that, every two years, we have an election, right? So, our House changes. There's a chance it could change every two years. There's a lot of 100 seats that come up every two years. So, you don't know in two years, someone else comes in, or several new elected officials come in. They don't like it, if it would pass, and want to see these changes made. Or they do, want to see these other forms of changes being made. So, it could not be a concrete type thing to look at, from that standpoint. So, it's something to really think about in the back of your mind as this amendment comes up, is that, and it doesn't mean anything's going to get exempt right away. And they have come out and said that. It's really nothing there, like, if it were to pass in November, that doesn't mean things turn around come January and everything gets eliminated, or after that session. Is there a chance? You know? You really don't know what they'll do in the session, and how they'll look at it. And it's always a possibility. But, and some of these may never get exempted. So, we don't know. Do we know the plan? No. We haven't really received that, I think. Today, or Tuesday, more than three weeks now, we were supposed to get a plan. I know Jonathan has inquired about it. We've been inquiring for a plan for, I think, the past five or six years, because this is not new. If you follow everything, about six years ago, there was a Senate Joint Resolution Seven, SJR Seven, basically the same type of battle to exempt the businessperson property aspect. So, it's here, and the other side is, we don't know how, it's going to be backfill. So, you'll see one section in there I have. I have the first part, what it will look like on the ballot for the amendments. The second page is just Mon County. So, when you look at those numbers there, on that second handout... Shit, I ran out.
Mark, I want to know if you got some copy of that one there?
No, I didn't, because I ran short.
Can you get some of the copies up?
If you could just bring it up.
But I can, off the top of my head, when you looked at that on there, that was for tax year '21, okay? No, that's just a setup. For tax year '21, that was just closed. That's the numbers we ran. Patrick ran those numbers. We ran those also with the state. And that's what Mon County would lose as a whole. And when I say Mon County, I don't mean just a county. That's municipalities, that's TIPS included in there, and that's the excess county levies also included in there. And then on the backside, I think Patrick broke that all out for you, where it's got the school, with the current excess, and the bonds through that, then there's the levies, and there's municipalities, on which you would lose as a total, going across that. So, this is some of the information we wanted to make sure that we were able to hand out to individuals. We've done this in other presentations, for people to just see Mon County as a whole, especially today, with representatives here, all within the county municipalities and TIPS. TIPS seem to be a big question people have asked about. The numbers include the TIPS. So, if some people say, "Well, how much money is involved with the TIPS?", it's in there. The personal property from the TIPS is in that total, the personal property's been poured. Okay? So, that's, and I know that's come around in some of the, I guess, town hall meetings that have been going on through the state. People have asked about the impact on TIPS. And I know there's probably, what, 10 counties that have TIPS?
I think something like that.
So, some of those counties have asked on the impact that it will have on them. So, I think some of the legislative members doing the town hall didn't realize that we had that money allocated into these reports, that the personal property was lumped in. It just wasn't separated out as TIP One, TIP Two. It's all encompassed in that.
Mark, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Those are the current TIPS. Any future TIPS?
Aren't in there, no.
Are in. So, that's important. So, any future TIPS or development will not be in it?
Right.
Okay.
The TIPS adds of 2021 are the numbers that are in there.
Right.
All right? Because we don't have any other figures yet, moving forward for that. So, that one right there, and you'll see behind it, I apologize, too, because I think I have a third page, maybe on that, was a copy. But Patrick went ahead and did one for me that was highlighted, that you have here. And actually, this was from a county-by-county assessment data that they've been putting out during interims recently, to hand to people, which is each individual county's numbers, which looks like this. These are the individual ones from that. And you'll see I put one in there from Mon County. You're going to see a little discrepancy. You're going to sit there and say, "Well, wait a minute. Your one sheet you just gave us has this number, and this one shows this." Well, what they ended up doing was, we gave them a seven-year trend. So, they took five years of that trend. They took the highest amount from each category, and that's what they wanted to reverse back. So, I'm looking at your sheet there, it says machinery and equipment. And as you can see, in '17, that was the highest from Mon County. All right? Our numbers that you see on that one sheet does not reflect the highest. That was our '21 tax year. But what they've thrown in is, well, we're going to make the pot a little sweeter. We're just going to give you back the highest amount of taxes that you collect, that you got, for each of those years in those categories. So, now you'll see Mon County got an extra $6 million bump up. So, instead of $24, $25 million, we're at $30,834,000. So, that's what Mon County would be projected to receive back, from their plan. That's what we would get back. Okay? Now, you see how they got that, though? I mean, I don't want to lose anybody, but if you just go through the categories where it's highlighted, that's the highest amount, okay, in that category. It doesn't have to come from the same year. They took the highest from each of those five years and added it together. And said, "Here's now what we'll get back." Which has been very, you know, it can be enticing, too, to smaller counties, because they may never see that amount. Again, that might be a once-in-a-lifetime type of thing. But that's, when you're looking at this page right here, that's what that consists of. Okay? This is Mon County as a whole, from this. So, it's not representative. Granville, Westover, Star City, Blacksville. But that's, that's that as a whole. You'll see the, what we had over here at the '24, then you'll see what the projected would be at the '30 million. And that's why that went up, because of that. Any questions?
I do have a question. Would this just be a one-year allocation, or are they projecting it out for five years?
That we don't know.
Okay.
That we don't know. And, you know, it could be maybe five years down the road, that they sit there and say that. That's the information we've been hoping to gather for this, but we haven't been successful in getting that information from them.
Thank you.
But, let's just say, say that's it for five. If they say, you know, that's five years, so what happens in year six? Is that no longer there? What happens in year six? And Mon County gets a big boost. You have more growth. So, our numbers become higher. Are we going to get that? Would it be always a continuation of getting the highest as you move forward? Or is it just going to be like this? You know, are we going to be like one large TIP county, in a sense? You know, you have a base, but you get no growth, in a sense, from that? So, any questions?
I have another question you don't have an answer to, but I'll pass it to you anyway. So, if we eliminate machinery and equipment, furniture and fixtures, all these different categories, and, you know, like it's never happened before, the state ends up having a shortfall in their budget, and they can't actually pay this amount of money, then if the locals want to replace those funds through local initiatives, the only thing that they'll have will be real property for people to, basically, homes and land to tax, to increase the millage rate, to make up that difference. Do I understand that correctly?
That's a big possibility.
Okay.
That's a big possibility.
Well, I think that's an important thing for people to understand, that if, you know, for whatever mysterious reason, the state may not be solvent some year, or may not do as well, it could have an effect on everybody.
Yeah, I mean, as one of our discussions we had, we kind of reiterated that we're still West Virginia. And the money that you have now is kind of maybe a one-shot deal for what we have. But we're still our state. We know our state. And can you get $800 million in perpetuity? If that's it, every year, just to pay, just to backfill counties? That's just that. So, those are the questions that we toss out and try to get answers for, and we haven't been successful. We haven't been able to get that.
And David, to that point, yes, we can increase the millage rates, if, assuming that the 60 percent, that the...
Your property is assessed at, stays the same. But there's 38 counties that are maxed out at the county level. They can't go any higher. There's 50 school boards that are currently at the max. They can't go higher on their, on their regular levy. So, most, and again, I don't have the number on the 260-something municipalities, but those are pretty much all maxed out, too. So, there isn't a lot of flexibility there. So, they would have to, they would have to change the assessment percentage to actually be able to recoup those funds.
Is Mon County's school levy maxed?
We are not.
You're not?
We are not.
Yeah, but...
Well, the, your regular, your regular levy, you're at, you are maxed.
Right, the county.
Yes.
The DNO.
Which, the state law says it can go to, like, 23, but there's a limit at 19.4. And 50 of the 52 counties are at that limit.
The excess is not, is it?
No, the excess is not.
Right.
Any other questions, real quick?
Mark, I just have a comment, two extra.
We need to start.
Of all the people I've talked to, when everybody's just talking about, "Okay, I don't want to take tax on my car."
Oh, you got to shine them.
They know nothing about any of this. Nothing. I think it's maybe the host put out a nice article, you know, basically saying that, you know, "We're taking a risk, and we're letting Charleston decide our fate."
And that's it. I mean, we would be giving all of our authority to Charleston to control everything. And you would probably have counties eventually have to go to Charleston and look at how much money they would need to operate the counties. You look at possibilities of things that you have, like transportation, parks and lots, volunteer fire departments, or libraries, things that could be impacted a great deal. You know, through this, just in, and some people don't take consideration, how about personnel? You know, people sometimes forget about that. You know, budgets could have an impact on that, on how they operate, from that standpoint. And going back to Mayor Reed's thing, and that's what I hear a lot of, they're like, "Well, you're against us having to pay for our vehicles." That's actually far from the truth. That's not why what we're doing this for. We're doing this for, not just now, but down the road, the impact that it has, that you have guaranteed money that's there, that you operate your county with, that would be gone. And you don't know if that money's coming back. So, yeah, we're fortunate here in Mon County, because we have a lot. We've had a lot of growth. We've been able to survive several things here. But that may not always be the outcome, in a sense. And would it be nice for people not to pay? Let me put it this way, that bill was out there, and correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't there a bill just for elimination of personal property motor vehicles?
Yeah.
A separate bill?
Yeah.
So, there was just a separate bill out there for that, that didn't go through. It got defeated. So, basically, they just took that one and lumped it into here. What's the easiest way for this to be looked at? For most people, as you're saying, they will look at that and see that, but not really understand the other aspects of the authority side, of giving that up, what that potential could have, as the impact. So, there are just a lot of things to really, really look at. You know, there's been some comments made through their presentations about West Virginia is one of the just few left states that have this tax. But if you really look at the one handout that I handed out from West Virginia Center of Budget Policy, which I've been to three of their presentations. They do a very good job with data. That's why I wanted to give that last part there, on what's at stake with Amendment Two. There's one section back there. There are 11 states that have this tax. West Virginia's one, that have machinery, equipment, and inventory. All right? So, that's 11. There's 23 or 24 that have machinery and equipment. So, as a whole, you've got 34 to 35 states that still have this form of tax that's on. So, it's not just a minimal amount. I don't consider 35 just being a minimal. I mean, it's over 50% of our states. So, they still have that. The weird thing is, you'll see, is states that do have this tax have an increase in manufacturing growth. States that don't have it have had a dip in manufacturing growth. Don't know. Don't know the full thing behind it. I may be like a lot of you, I've read it three times, just to make sure I wasn't seeing it differently. But it's odd, that you can see states that don't have, that have it, increase in manufacturing growth, not not. I think today, I read on Metro News, there was a great thing, I think, in Hoppies, about those large companies that have come in, and why, like Nucor and some of those, and looking at the economic growth in West Virginia over the course of the last few years. Wow! It's amazing. When you see all the businesses that have come in, or new businesses that people have opened, it's not where nobody's wanting to do anything in West Virginia. It's like, we seem to get more. So, that's, that's the question I had, and I know I sent it to Jonathan this morning, is, you know, we're doing so well, why do we want to give that up? I mean, what's, what's the difference? I know other states, and I think all that Jonathan go on that, because he might have a little more knowledge of that, and I think that have eliminated this tax. But I think they're trying to put it back on, because it didn't work. But again, it's a coin flip, right? We look at things as a coin flip. Our part is the Assessors Association, and as Waco, or Association of Counties, is to try to make sure people have a little bit of an understanding of what this amendment is. And I'm not here to say vote for or vote against it. Spend a little bit of time, look at the information that you're getting, or what you're seeing, and look at it closely, and what the impacts could be, like I said, not present, but down the road. Because if it's present, they're saying they have the money. My thing is, how do we duplicate that type of money in perpetuity?
Am I understanding correctly, then, this proposed revenue replacement's going to come from the state?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they're going to extract the money, right? Exempt that, that's how much we'd be losing. They're going to replenish that money back, as we presented. So, really, you're not losing money, but you're going to gain money, because they're going to take the highest of each of those years, for now, for now. Yes.
Mark, you asked a question, and it came from the West Virginia Center of Budget Policy. On municipal government impact, in Montegia County, the municipalities would lose an estimated $1.633 million in revenue, or 21.8% of the total municipal property tax revenue. The school district would lose an estimated $16.87 million in revenue, or 21.8% of the school's property tax. And that would also include $8.64 million from the regular school levy, and $8.128 million from the school excess levies. So, those are the questions. But the problem that is also being stated is, they are, they think they have the money for one year because of the ARPA funds. That's what people are forgetting. The ARPA funds were used to pay all these other bills. Therefore, they have this extra money available. The ARPA funds are going to stop. And that's the concern and the question the county commissioners have, because where is this money? You asked a great question. Where is $800 million every year? And all I think of is, you look at the state road formula. And Evan Hansen figured it out, and realized how much we were getting less than we should have, and there's never been a change. What do you think could happen with this? And that's a concern.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan, let you go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. I'm Jonathan Adler. I run the West Virginia Association of County Officials, and represent the, all the elected courthouse officials in West Virginia. And I know it's going to sound self-serving to say this, but I do mean that you have an excellent courthouse here in Mon County. Everybody's just great. They do a super job. They've all been active on this issue. Mark has been a member of our task force that we put together early this spring to try to crunch the numbers. Or we, we were asked, about a month after we formed the task force, we were asked by Senator Tar, who's kind of heading this effort, to crunch numbers to see if we could come up with like numbers. So, if we had our numbers like with what the state has, we wanted to try to work from a baseline number we could all agree with, state and counties, as to what we were looking at. And so, it's kind of settled around $550 million. And so, you know, this has been worked on for four or five years, as far as the legislature trying to pass a resolution to get an amendment on the vote. Originally, five years ago, when they did it, they included the constitutional protection in there. So, they were going to keep it in the Constitution. We were going to lose, I think, $160 million or something. But they were going to pay us back. And it was in the Constitution that they were going to pay us back that loss. Well, what they did subsequent years was, they took that constitutional protection out. So, now what happens is, there's no protection of county revenues. They say right now they're going to backfill us. And I personally believe them. I believe current leadership that they're going to pay us back this $550 million. But that doesn't hold future legislatures into account. They can lose that promise. And those of you who run budgets, do budgets all the time, you know, there are things in your budgets that you pay for, that you want, that you need, but some years in a down year, you're going to lose something that you can't pay for, because you're being smart about how your budget, to keep that budget whole. So, we're going to fall in that same category. Right now, county government is going to be part of the general revenue stream for state government. So, we're going to be competing with all these state agencies, who have worthy services they provide, too. They need full funding. We need full funding for the services we provide. We're going to be lumped into that. We're at risk for losing that money down the road, through future legislatures. There's so many things to that. There's so many things that haven't been said. I want to commend, too, Commissioner Bloom. When this began earlier this year, when we had our conference, he's always had a very healthy skepticism about, about this proposal by the legislature.
I appreciate that word.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And, and I think the kind of fear, his honesty, because he's been honest about it, about the fears that we have. And you hear the speaker talk about fear mongering. Well, we do have fears, because quite frankly, they haven't discussed with us enough about their plans, about how they're going to do this. They've had lots of time to do that, but they keep putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, delay, delay, delay. Now, the election shows up, and people are not in the know, except they, they hear they're going to car tax back. And so, you know, they're going to support that, potentially. They don't know all these other things that are part of this amendment. First off, you know, why would the state want to create another hole to fund? They have so many things they have to fund already, so they're going to create another $500, $600 million hole, pay us back. Right now, we're hearing that there's maybe 1,500 teacher shortage in the state. There's at least 1,000 employees in DHHR short. There's about 1,000 employees in jails that are short. Plus, at least, anywhere from 400 to 600 million, at least, of the burden maintenance costs on our state jails. You've got rising PEIA health costs, which there's a hole right there as it is. So, this ARPA, this ARPA bonus they have right now, which is, you know, anywhere from, I think, $1.2 billion, let's call it, that can go away immediately, just on the holes they have right now. And so, they're going to create this extra hole, and really, they're, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul. They're going to take this $600 million from a 550, provide tax cuts mainly for businesses, you know, but also give people their car tax. But how long can they sustain that? How long can they do that? And that's the thing, and they can't answer that. Last week, State Chamber of Commerce held their business summit. And Friday morning, they had a panel discussion. And everybody on there was pro Amendment Two, of course. And I was watching like a hawk to see what everybody said. And interestingly, they're, the attorney, who has been the, the proponent, the guy really behind the scenes, that's been thinking about this for many, many years, promoting this idea, he said, he said to everybody, "Well, you know, this is great, because now, you know, we believe in local authority, and local autonomy, and the counties are going to get to keep that. And their assessors are going to be able to assess. And we see, we see real estate is going to go up. And hey, that's, that's for them to do, decide, and that's going to go up, and they'll be taken care of. That's going to be okay." That's our number-one fear. That's the number-one thing we tell the public. "Hey, you know what? Your property rates are going to go up now because of this. You don't want that to go up, but that's what's going to happen." Yes, I mean, the 60% needs to be increased a little bit. Commissioner Shakur's right about that. The state has to, the Senate has to approve that, that level. But they, they've talked about, they're willing to do that, you know? But I think a lot of them are going to be scared. So, we're looking at, you know, right now, things are rosy right now. But when they talk about, when you hear, "Well, our energy prices are, we've got all these great severance tax numbers, and things like that are great." I've been to two hearings so far before the Senate Finance Committee, the summit. Both times, state tax explained that these rosy severance numbers are based on cost, on price increases. Has nothing to do with production, nothing at all. There's no increased production, but there is increased price, as we know. We've been paying at the gas pump. We know the gas prices have been up. That's been good for coal, oil, and gas, too. That's not going to last forever, either. I was reading Wall Street Journal last week as well, too. They want to talk about how bad these taxes are at business machinery, that they're keeping coal mines from opening back up and producing the coal. Not true. The reason why they're not doing it, it's because Wall Street, the banks, are not investing in them anymore. They're not investing in fossil fuels. And that's a real big question concern among the business community. That's what's going on right now with that. So, we've got a lot of things we're looking at here. So we've got a lot of things we're looking at here. The state has a lot of holes they need to fill. We're constitutionally protected, the county government, and the schools right now. The schools are going to get 2/3 of these monies. So we want to keep that protection. You know, I'm not against tax cuts. I don't think we're against tax cuts, certainly for the car tax for the people or income tax or whatever, which reminds me, the governor in the last week or so has really been blasting this plan. He hasn't stopped because he sees it for what it is, and he's worried about the future too. We have guaranteed monies right now for the counties, as he says. We're going to lose that now, and it's a risk. So he's totally against this. And so, keep an open mind about it, but know everything that goes into this too. It's not just about receiving a car tax. What are you going to be paying more of to make up for that lost revenue? So it's a huge, huge issue. People need to be educated about it and understand it. And my association, we're going to do our part, and just to let you know, this afternoon, we have not officially taken a stand on it yet. We've held back because we've been giving the legislature some time to talk to us, give us a plan, show us what you want to do. And that's another thing. The House and Senate don't agree on a plan. So there's no agreement in the legislature, and the governor's against it. So that gives us no confidence to buy into a plan they support when they don't agree themselves about how it's going to work. This should have been done a long time ago. All the stakeholders should have been involved, the schools and county governments, everybody involved, to come up with a plan that we can all believe in in West Virginia, we can all step forward together and say, "We think this is going to be a good thing, and we're all going to win." But we're not there. We're all divided. So why buy into something where we're not, where we're all divided on this? So I can go on and on and on and talk about this all day. I don't want to bore you, but I know your county officials are doing a great job to educate you, listen to them, go to more meetings, hear what they have to say. Talk to your legislators too. Hold them accountable. Have them explain to you how this is going to be a good thing. Because you know what? Most of them really can't explain it. They can't. So I've said my piece for now, but thank you.
You done?
[laughing]
I hope.
I hope.
That was good. I mean, I'll echo with Jonathan. It's not here to drag this thing out for hours. We just want to get some information out, do the education side, then have like a discussion. Anybody wanting to have any questions or have a discussion on it, it'd take a few minutes to do that, but I know everybody's got their schedules to do, so I don't want to consume all your time.
Hey, Mark, I've got a question.
Okay.
Oh, I got a steak banana question. I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer when it comes to this stuff, but what I've heard so far, I'm against it. I'm going to tell my family, do not vote for this. It's a risk. You might as well just go down to a hotspot and put all your paycheck in the machine. I mean, my God. I mean, if you guys haven't decided yes or no, I'll tell you right now, it's no for me. Now, what can Star City do to help this cause to get the noes out there? What can I do? You know, we've got three more farmers' markets. I'll put up posters with the information about Amendment Two.
I think the thing is, is the education of it just gives people full understanding. Again, it goes back to what everybody's saying, you know, and what you were saying. If someone reads that, they're going to say, "Well, I don't have to pay for my personal motor vehicle." They bypass the first part.
Right.
They don't understand. When we presented, we presented what the controllers and the treasures of the State Board of Education. Once they heard, for some of those folks, heard the word authority is giving up, it changed their mind.
Yeah.
It wasn't about anything else. A lot of people in groups I've spoken to, especially seniors, do not want to give up their authority.
Right.
That's something they've had, and they're not willing to give that up, especially to state government, is what they've told me. They don't want to do that. They don't want to be wards of the state in a sense. They have to go through that. But it's the education side, they're not really paying attention to that word. So when we brought that out, myself and my cohort in this is the Assessor in Harrison County, Rock Ramana, we've been doing these together, but that's what we've been focusing in on, is that word. And it's kind of really changed a little bit. It gives, we get their attention because they're not aware that they are giving up their authority. Some think they're giving up their authority just for this year. And I remember I had one lady that asked, "So if this has to go back on, if we fight to put this back on, does it come back to us?" I said, "No." So that was her mindset of, "Okay, I'll give up my authority altogether."
Is there any way we can do like town, you know, open house, like one for Westover, one for Star City, one for Granville, and see if we can get people to come in?
And that was going to be one of my closing suggestions. And I'm working with Kelly from West Virginia Center of Budget Policy to come here to do one of theirs too. So we're going to have one there with them to do that, and that'll be with the assistance of our delegates. So I've already spoken to them. We've had our Zoom to kind of go over this with them. They want to have something with that. I'm all for it, and Kelly had said, "I'll be there." We were at Bridgeport a couple of weeks ago when they had there. So I'm working with them to coordinate a place and stuff to do that. To have the small ones, I think that's wonderful. I think, going back to your question, how do you get that out? That's that. I mean, I'm having, I call it the on-deck education forums. So in my neighborhood, just inviting neighbors to come over and, you know, whatever, come over to school and sit, have a discussion on it, kind of like what we're doing here for a little bit. It's one way to reach more people. Can we reach them all? But my thing is, if you have the small ones in your areas, in your community, if you have 20 people that come, that may turn to 40. They may get home and tell their spouse or their partner or whomever's at their home, they may pass it on down. So those are very important. And I think the ongoing education side is important, especially I look to all of the leaders within our county that through our government of some sorts, get that message out, have a little bit of the information. I'm more than happy to come. I don't have a problem with that. You know, trying to work on schedules and stuff like that may not buy into some of my schedule, but I know, I think this week at White Park, they're having, they're having something, I think, 5:00 to 7:30 at the Pavilion. I think they're calling it a postcard type of a thing, and what they're going to go over, I think they're going over Amendments Two and Four, recall, Sunday. I think I saw that. So there are things that are starting, because I think it's getting closer now, so people are starting a little bit more revving things up. I think it's important though to have those. I know we've had our discussions here.
I wanted to say a couple of things. You know, the commissioners all have been really working this closely, some more vocal than others, but, you know, we've been-
Trying to look at all the different pieces of this, and, you know, when they came out with this plan, we immediately went through the plan and scoured it. But at the end of the day, it's really, I mean, we can secure a long-term deal to replace these lost funds, but these agreements are at the whim of future legislature. So it's only going to take a recession to quickly reshape these old promises. So that's what's scary, is you're talking about giving away the power. And we've tried, we've tried to look at this a bunch of different ways. I mean, when they put out this plan, they said, "Okay." They tried to sweeten the pot. They said, "We'll even pay for your jail bills." Well, we were at our County Commission Association meeting when I've said, "Okay, but our jail bill is $1.6 million." And they're like, "Yeah, there's $6 million." And I said, "But we only get 17% of that. So you're still shorting us a half million dollars on your promise." So, but I applaud the Senate for at least, you know, taking the step to try to figure out a plan, but it falls short because it's really just, it really, there's no power after one year. You know, and it is just one body. It's just the Senate that's put this forward. So it's really, how much do you trust the three of us, the five school board members, the municipality lead councils, you know, as far as setting those rates? Or shifting a quarter of our power to Charleston to make those decisions and assume that from here on out that somebody's going to keep that promise? And that's the part, I mean, we're Mon County. We're, you know, we're, everybody always points, when we go away to these, go to Charleston, they always say, "Well, you guys have good problems." And everybody's like, "Poo, poo's our problem." But they're good problems nonetheless. I mean, they're problems nonetheless, and we're used to being shorted on so many different things. Why would this be any different as far as when we put that power in the hands of the legislature to make those decisions? So that's what's scary about it. Yes, they sweetened the deal by putting personal property tax on this, and that's probably going to, you know, get people to say, "Yeah, I'd take away my personal property tax." But if you're a homeowner, it may be made up on your real estate taxes, so where are you? And then, you know, how fair is that? You know, this quarter of these taxes are going to be on the backs of real estate owners eventually. Because there eventually is going to have to be a solution in every other case, there's, when these monies have gone dry, they've had to find another solution, and that's when it comes back to the public. So you may get a break now, but I don't trust that it's going to be forever. So, and there's other things, there's other pieces of this. You're only talking about six feces of personal property tax. There's a couple that are left off. What if they add those on? You know, then there's another 250 million or so that's going to have to be made up that they didn't even consider. So it's, this is like the third time since I've been on a commission that they've come after personal property taxes, and each time, they failed to look at the revenue part first. And I've told that to legislatures. I said, "If you guys are going to come after this, figure out the revenue part first before you start figuring out, you know, taking the way the revenue from us. Figure out how you're going to make up that revenue first." And I've yet to see a plan that actually does that.
In January, when Mr. Adler, when we were at our conference and I spoke up to ask the same questions in January that we're asking right now in August, there was no plan at that time. They did come back with a plan, and I give them credit, but just for example, the last plan we had was 27th July, and now they come up with a new plan in August. They keep adding on to the plan. So how much more can you keep adding on to say that this is going to happen and it's going to be paid for? And the best way I tried to explain it to a couple of my neighbors is this. I'm buying Mark's house. I go and say, "Okay, Mark, how much is it?" And Mark says, "Well, I don't know. You just signed the document. I will tell you later." So then I go over to JR, who's the bank and the county commission, and I say, "Okay, well, how much money do you need?" "Well, we don't know. We'll tell you that later." And that's what we're having. There are no specific accountability answers. When the public comes to the city, and, you know, City Morgantown, how much is it going to cost? Daniel will say, "It'll cost this much." Or, you know, Herman, we say it with the county commission, how much it's going to cost. The problem is, we don't know the answers, and we're giving all our authority to another group. And let's be honest, look how Mon County has dealt with Roads of Prosperity. Look how we've dealt with the roads. And the question is, do you really think that the money's going to come north of Exit 99 and give us all this money every year? And that's the question I'm asking for the public to understand. Please don't give us that authority away. That's me personally. But I know I will tell you, the county commissioners have been meeting. We've been waiting till after this meeting. We want to hear you all, then we're going to meet again to discuss a position.
And to Herman, to your question, again, you need to educate the people in your municipality. You'll be seeing something from the commission soon as far as a position on this. You need to publicly state your position. And again, we're all for, we've lowered our taxes for five straight years. There's no other county in the state that's done that. But we've done it in a realistic, in a very measured way. Because the last thing we want to do is come in and have to raise your taxes again. So we didn't lower your taxes until we were sure we could. But we've done it in a responsible way, and we've managed to do more with those less dollars. Because we're managing those dollars here in Mon County. You give that power away to somebody at the state level, then we lose that control.
Sure. Elica?
So, I'm really, maybe a bad question, but I'm wondering, so does this have to be voted down statewide, like if we're talking statewide? So I'm wondering, you know, how are you gauging how other counties are seeing this, taking this? Has there been a-
Jonathan, you want to try and answer? That's a great, no, that's a great question, because it has to be statewide.
It has to be a 50.1%.
Yes. Excellent question, though.
Yeah, I think as far as county governments go, it sounds like the county commissioners right now, I think the last number I heard was like 25 or 26 opposed to support the thing. There are some that, I know two counties, Mon, or excuse me, Ohio and Campbell County have taken an official neutral position right now, which I'm not discouraged by because I think, you know, there's time, again, when they're neutral, it tells me they're very nervous about what this thing's going to do and what it's going to mean for their counties. So they're not supporting it. The two that have one county, I think it's because they know they can absorb losing the car tax in their county, Berkeley, Berkeley County. But I think overall, I think most of the counties are, they're nervous about their relationship with their legislators, and they don't want to have some kind of vindictive response. So there's some fear there. But I think in my case, and what we've talked about too, is I'm not interested in pointing fingers or making enemies of those guys or calling them out or anything at all. I welcome the fact they're trying to come up with ideas and work in a global economy and try to build the economy. As Mark said earlier, you know, we've already had several really excellent announcements statewide, I know here in Mon County, too, without amendments passing. So it's not like they're not willing to come here anyway. So I think those things are going, I think this thing is so huge and so undefined that, you know, we're right to be skeptical and nervous about it. And until we have a plan that we can all go forward on. So that's why I'm saying too, if it passes, and right now, a lot of people think that it will, you know, I want to be able to walk in the legislature, we all want to walk in there having a good relationship to say, "Okay, how do we fashion this thing to make it work?" And that's their symbol. You know, "We haven't done that yet, and we want your input." Well, so far, we haven't really gotten that discussion or input given it. You know, we want to. So if it does pass, we're in a position now where we're going to hopefully have those discussions, and they're going to welcome us. So we want to have a cordial relationship. And the other thing is too, we're all in government. And to me, that's my main mission. I can't stand people that just are government bashers all the time. I get it, it's an easy thing to do, but we've seen just in the last few years how scary it is if we don't have government. We don't believe in our institutions, that they make mistakes, but they do improve our lives, they make lives better for us. And we've got to remember that. We've got, we can't take it for granted. So I'm a big believer, proponent of government at all levels. I think public service is a great thing, and I think we all need to exude that kind of, you know, confidence every day.
I probably should know this, but how does it pass or how does it fail?
Well, just 50%, 50 plus one passes.
Jonathan, those are good points. That's been my, and that's where Tom and I have differed a little bit, you know, all along, because my approach has been, listen, you know, we can't go scorched earth, we can't do this and just, you know, disparage our legislatures in Charleston, because if it passes, we have to work with them. So we don't want to burn any of those bridges. So we've been trying to, you know, politely have those conversations. And I, you know, the last county commission meeting we went to, I was a little ashamed of how some of my county commissioners treated Senator Tar.
Wasn't he?
Yeah, Tom wasn't there. But it was, you know, again, we need to have those conversations, and we need to talk like we're talking here. And just because you're for it and I'm against it doesn't mean that I dislike you, you know? And that's what we need to make sure is that in trying to prove our point and put this out, that we weren't disparaging the other side, that we were just really trying to make our position. Because again, it's things like, when I told Senator Tar in front of that whole conference that, "Well, you realize you're telling me that $6 million is going to cover my jail bill, and it's not." And he didn't know that. You know, and again, that's not a slam, it's just that they don't know things that we know. And they don't live our lives. Some of them have been county commissioners before, but they may have forgotten some of the things and just what it takes to run county government.
Yeah. And I think too, that just plays into the other thing about, we need to have relationships with our legislators. with our legislators. You know, it works both ways. You know, we get upset because they take us for granted, they don't come here, they don't talk, they don't know what we do. By the same token, we gotta reach out to them. You know, it's probably incumbent upon us to do it. You know, they would be just gobsmacked. You call them up, hey, I'm so and so, I do this in Mon County, I want to talk to you, meet with you, whatever. I mean, I think we really need that. We really need that kind of, you know, we're all in this together. We're all in government, no matter what level we believe in, and we're public servants for a reason. So I think we approach it from that standpoint. You know, I forget the, you know, more honey, you attract more flies with honey than vinegar. You know, I hope that still works today. We need to, I think this whole, and that's the other thing, too, this is not political. This is not Republican versus Democrat.
No.
This is about government, how you believe government works, levels of government, and respect for each level and what they do. That's what this is about. And plenty of Democrats supported this. As a matter of fact, there was a Democrat that put the car tax in the bill. So this isn't, like I said, this is not a party thing at all. It's not.
If, just for, say, we have the levies, and the money right there is for the levies, you know, to offset it. But the next levy, which comes up, what, in two years? That money may not be there, correct?
Mm-hmm.
See, so that's another, you know, with increased costs and the levies, and we have the possibility of a new levy coming up, the emergency services levy. See, those are the things. Now, what you will hear is, yes, they gave us extra funding for a little bit, but let's take a look at reality. Look at the cost of food, look at the cost of what is going on, extra funds for nonprofits. I mean, all of us nonprofits are having difficulty because there isn't the extra funding available. And the ARPA funding and the other funding is now not gonna continue. And that's what we're very, very worried about. They were able to use the ARPA fund to pay those bills. But, John, again, I want to make sure that's clear. What did you mention? How much you were talking about? Could you say that again? Because I want to get that.
The ARPA figure?
Yeah, no, you said 400 million for the budget, the holes that possibly could be.
Yeah, well, you've got, you know, you've got about 1,000 people down in the regional jails, the jails' employees. You know, the governor last month declared an emergency, and National Guard's now working in the jails, you know, about 1,000 employees down.
Okay.
So you've got probably 1,000 or more down, DHHR. I think the number now, 1,200 or 1,500 down in teachers.
Yes.
Which is gonna be a crisis. I'm not sure, I haven't verified this, but I thought one county did cancel school for a while because they didn't have teachers nor substitutes to cover.
Yeah.
So that's happened. So there's holes there. You've got public employee insurance, PEIA, that's been running at a deficit for a long time now. There's a huge hole there that needs to be filled. And they're actually gonna, we're gonna have the Hospital Association speak at our meeting next month. They're gonna put in a bill to increase premiums 14% for non-state employees in 2024. So that's gonna be a premium increase. On top of what the state, the whole the state has itself in PEIA. So they gotta fill that hole. Then on top of the jails, I said they're 1,000 people short, they've got at least half a million, half a billion dollars at least in deferred maintenance costs.
Deferred maintenance.
They've got facilities they need to upkeep that they're behind. And so that's a lot of money. That's a big, you know, with roof and just, you know, inside the building, structures, locks, whatever, huge, huge ticket on in there, too. So that's, all these holes that they're gonna need to fill, and then they want to put another 550 million on top of that. I mean, that's just, that's a lot for them to ask.
Thank you. That's what we've clarified.
Yeah, all of that while claiming there's a surplus.
Right.
So, I mean, from my very small view of the world of public libraries, in the grand scheme of the state budget, it's been 12 years since we've had an increase in state funding. Because it's always a bad year, is the response. We get told every year, you know, oh, come back next year. Or the last four years, the word has been, you know, it has to be a flat budget. So how do I believe, our levy funding right now is the only budget I can count on, a small increase every year, a planned increase of my entire library system budget. You know, the levy is the only money I know is gonna go up a little bit each year. We budget 5% increase, it goes up about 7%. So we get a little bit of a 7 to 10, a little bit of a buffer there. Our state funding has not changed in 12 years. Our city money has changed greatly with our current city council. But that's an appropriation. If they're missing 25 to 30% of their revenue, I don't imagine they are going to continue to fund us at the same level that they think. I have worked in other counties of this state that have been on the brink of bankruptcy, and the very first thing out of their mouth is, we're not constitutionally obligated to fund the library. And there are a lot of counties and municipalities who will take this as an opportunity to walk away from funding those entities. Because they will no longer be required to do so. Public health falls under that, too. They're not required to fund it by a, they're required to fund it, but not by a certain amount, so they can just make up whatever they want, unless that's changed in the last two years. But, like, this is a big, I have reasonable fears for my library in Mon County, but I have real deep-seated fears for the small rural libraries of this state. There's 171 libraries in the state, one in all 55 counties. And probably half of them run on budgets of less than $90,000 a year. And it's the only point of access for internet, for books, for recreation, for people to run their businesses. They are economic engines of their counties. And they can just go away, like, in a snap with this, whether the reality of this is that the money doesn't come back to the county, or it does, it just opens a door for it to not go where people asked for it to go. That's the real danger in it for me. Right, if, you don't know, I'm Sarah Paul, from the director of the Morgantown Public Library System, but I also am the head of Legislative Chair for the West Virginia Library Association. And our statement will also be coming out this afternoon about how, we don't get to stand on that box very often because we always have to walk the education line, but the Library Association itself can say, vote against amendment two.
Sarah, that's an excellent point, because you're right. This presents an opportunity for people that sit in our position to walk away from funding, from areas that, hey, you know, it used to be, hey, maybe it's not a necessity, but it gives us an opportunity to walk away. When I came on commission, we were funding our health department at $250,000 a year. We've doubled that. And we don't have to fund them anything. So, you know, there's a half million dollars you can save right there, which, what would, you know, where would we be if we didn't have our health department going through this pandemic in the last couple of years? So again, those are areas that you can just walk away from, and, you know, okay, we have to cut, this is where we'll cut. Those are the areas that are gonna get cut.
You don't like those books on the shelf? Or you're not a fan of that director?
And Dr. Smith, that's not a threat.
But it's easy...
It's easy to do.
It's easy to do in small municipalities, in, you know, in counties where our budgets are squeaky, right?
We provided roughly 1.4 million to...
Grants to nonprofits.
To nonprofits. If something like that would happen, that this would happen, anybody who's an officer that was elected, we can't touch their budget first, we have to touch everyone else's. And that would be these other quality of life that make people wanting to come here. And that's a scare for all of us. I mean, and whether it's the city, county, school system, I mean, the reason why we're good, let's be honest, one of the first questions anyone asks is, what is the school system like in Mon County? And we are very proud to say, please, look it up. Look what we are doing, and we have the university. Imagine if that's gonna be cut. And then what will be cut will be our biggest departments, unfortunately, which is police department and fire department for the cities, but police department for us. That's what we're worried about. Go ahead, Ellicott.
So you mentioned that it seemed like the question about tips is the one that keeps coming up the most. But I'm curious, because the room is kind of filled with levy folks. I'm wondering if, you know, there's been more of questions and arguments for those counties that have passed levies, and there's quite a few of them that depend on levy funding for those groups. Are these conversations, I mean, I'm not quite sure, having not looked at this closely, but are we looking at these numbers as, you know, you're gonna be eliminating, you know, certain funds that come into the levy automatically now? And how is that gonna impact each of these counties that had a countywide vote, had struggled to get those voters out for their levies, and then changing their amounts that are kind of obligated?
The change will be dependent on the personal property versus real property. And so in Mon County, that's about 25, 30%. So I guess across the board, you can look at it as saying 30% of your funding would...
I'm gonna be the other side. What they're gonna say is, we gave an additional amount of funds to cover this levy for several years. So they're gonna say, the levies are fine, which they are for a couple of years, if everything passes. Again, that's the other thing. We don't know which of these personal property taxes they may cut, which ones they'll keep. And see, those are the things we do not know.
See, that's the problem. This won't be codified.
Yeah.
So you might as well assume that we have to make up the funds.
Right.
And that's what we're talking about. So yes, they make it up here, but this isn't codified, so...
And again, the one thing that was emphasized is, if this amendment passes, it doesn't exempt anything.
Right.
The only thing it does is give current and future legislation the authority. So basically, what we're doing is saying, here, it's in your lab, you make the decisions. I mean, that's basically what it comes down to. But they don't, there's nothing, because I don't think they have anything really ready to do, to be honest with you. But it gives them time to put everything in place.
Obviously, they're looking to, or else why put it on the ballot? I don't know.
Exactly.
They want that ability to do that, because they've been trying to do it. The best way to get that done is to get this, the amendment, to give them the authority. Because it's been trying to pass before and never got out of their, what, committees?
Yeah.
In a sense, it was all about them. So this is the best way for legislation to have that, is to get it out there to the voters, which, from a political side, hey, we're giving it to you. You know, we're giving it to you to make that decision, and...
So what would the distribution process be? Is what I'm asking. Does the money come in the form of a pilt? Or does the money come to the county in the form of a general county deposit? That then these entities would have to come before the county commission to get their money?
They hadn't got that far down the road, but they were talking about generally it'd be like a block grant to the county, and then we'd have to disperse it.
They want to give the authority to the commission to say...
So then you all would be fighting amongst yourselves?
Yeah. It's like slicing a block of cheese. You get this much, you get that much.
Where ends are already set by your levy.
Yes. Right. Yes.
No, common sense, common sense would dictate that we would follow the current percentages, so...
But you don't have to.
Do you think common sense dictates? No, it isn't. Sorry, there's just too many questions.
That's the...
Too many open sentences.
Yes.
Crazy.
I'm curious, have any of our county representatives taken a public stance on this?
As their...
Like our representatives?
You're talking about our state representatives?
Delegates?
Yeah, our delegates.
That's a good question.
Not officially.
Not officially.
Not officially, publicly, they haven't.
Yes.
I notice some are working on it.
Yes.
Yeah.
They just, yeah, they haven't, but they just haven't found out.
I was just curious if they have taken a position.
You know, there's another way to eliminate personal property on your auto. You can sell it around the bus.
That's a, yeah.
That's who's the creative...
To answer your question, though, again, not to follow, make the same mistakes the Senate did. You know, your elected officials, the legislatures, need to talk to the assessors, to the commissioners to understand, or otherwise, they're making decisions that aren't completely educated, so...
Are they being involved in this?
I've had my own...
Okay, great.
And that's even consisting of those that Marion County that covered this area, too, so, you know, I've had those conversations.
And have you had any conversations with any of our legislators?
Yes, I have. And the majority of them privately say, we're totally against it, so I've asked them to publicly come out. And as you said, they are discussing that at this time, and so on.
See, and that's what's disappointing, because then again, it's a party thing.
Yes.
Because I have not had, other than Joe Statler, I've been, nobody asked me about it. And I would argue that I would probably be a little bit better prepared to discuss the numbers, so...
I think the biggest concern I have is, is that they are purposely doing this because they don't believe that people are gonna research, the voters aren't gonna research the real issue. The bottom line, when I talk to several of my neighbors, I don't have to pay a car tax. That's all they see. And I would try and explain, but do you do understand you may have to pay double or triple your property taxes? Oh, well, you won't do that to me. And I said, it's not that we're doing it to you, we have to balance the budget. And that they don't believe is going to happen. So all they can see right now is, and that's why, Herman, what you said, just to get the information out and understand it's the authority. And the simplest way is to say, if you have a problem, would you rather go locally to Mark, the assessor, or to the county commission, or the city, or try and talk and set up a meeting with Charleston? And that's the difference. That's what you have to look at. Because say, for example, they cut 50% of this one property tax, you know, of the tax business. Well, say they made a mistake, okay? And, you know, the state government never makes a mistake. As an individual who owns that business, you can't go to Mark and say, hey, they made a mistake. You have to go down to Charleston, and there's gonna have to be a group down there that's gonna be reviewing all this. That's the problem. Do you want it locally to deal with, or go down to Charleston? And that's my biggest concern, the authority. I have to shut up.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Do you have anything other than what you gave us, like a condensed flyer or something that, you know, we can make available, like at our town hall?
I have a worksheet from our county.
I've got something from Center and Budget.
Yes.
That a girl came in, it was a form of a postcard, I think she presented to us, if you remember, Sarah. She's one doing some of the PR work for the center. And it was, let me see if I can...
I have a worksheet just specifically that I read from Mon County that would be really good to have. That's from the West Virginia...
Well, I'd like to have some of those to pass out.
Yes.
I mean, even our, you know, our employees, our, we have things at the park, we have a lot of things going on at our park.
It's information, and that's what we're trying to do. We're giving all the information and let the person decide what is best for them and their family. And that's the key. I know, I don't know what the school system would say, because they're the ones hit more than anyone. Because they're guaranteed in the school budget formula, but not all the other things.
But only 85%.
Oh, I did not know that.
We're funded at 85% of the property taxes. So we solve the 15% plus the excess levy. And with our bond fund, if our base goes down, we have to still generate the principal and interest. So if our, our, I can't think of them, if our base goes down, then we're gonna have to increase the levy rates to meet the bond obligation.
Right. And that's what the biggest, I'm scared for the community, but it's the school system, because they're the major individual group that is getting the money from the personal property tax.
Well, if the city of Morgantown had meters that ran more than two hours, I'd stick around.
Any other questions?
We thank you.
And just remember one thing, when you go, just remember, amendment two doesn't exempt, it just gives up authority. And have those small meetings with your groups. Feel free, give me a call.